Joint meeting of Borough of Crafton Planning Commission and Crafton Council. This evening, we're going to be having a presentation from Bonin and Scattergood. Mike Bova with that firm is here this evening, and the discussion is on finance topics.
Thank you very much for having me here. Mike Bova, Benin Scattergood. Appreciate the opportunity to make a little presentation to you. What I'd like to do is I've got a little handout of information about our firm. I'm not going to go over it line by line by line, but if anybody has any questions while I'm going through it, please just stop me. Very important, this is a big picture overview. I know that the Borough is considering maybe some capital projects that would need to be financed and not enough cash out in to pay for them. So there's a couple of alternatives. The one is to enter the bond market and do financing through public offering to the market. And my firm, Benin and Scattergood, is an underwriter and full-service brokerage firm and does municipal financing. Now, if you kind of stay with me, I'll start on page three and just highlight some of the key areas that you should be aware of. We're a full-service investment banking firm. We're actually 104 years old. I haven't been with a firm that long, obviously, but I've been with them for 10 years.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah. Thank you. There's actually an extra one too.
Agreed.
That's it.
For sure.
No problem.
Great. Thank you.
We have three public finance offices, one in Eastern Pennsylvania, one in Western Pennsylvania, and one in Ohio. We have extensive experience in all different issues of public finance for general obligation, water, sewer, 501(c)(3), find their term-like financing. Page four, you'll see our office location and staff. We've got 15 offices throughout the Mid-Atlantic region. Majority of those offices are retail offices that have retail brokers that service retail and institutional clients. And our core service area is the Mid-Atlantic region with Ohio, Pennsylvania, a little bit in New York and New Jersey. And our corporate or world headquarters, as they like to say, is in Wisconsin-Johnston, which is right outside of Philadelphia. We have approximately 50 retail salespeople, 40 equity fixed income professionals. And you can see, again, the three finance, public finance offices in Ohio, Pittsburgh. Actually, we're in Carnegie and Lydia Street in Wisconsin-Johnston. On page five, I've just given you an overview of our practice in specific areas, nonprofits, 501(c)(3), local governments, boroughs, townships, counties, public education, charter schools, open space, farmland, community private colleges, charter schools, water and sewer utilities. And we also do financial advisory services, where we don't actually use our desk, don't write bonds, we just provide financial advisory services to issuers. Our distribution philosophy, which is very important, how do we sell the bonds? We have a distribution for retail and institutional investors for all our different offices. We sell bonds to tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three institutions. The difference between one, two, and three is the amount of assets that those institutions would participate in purchasing financing, purchasing bonds. Page seven, institutional retail distribution, which is a little bit more detailed on what the institutions are. As I said, passed the tax law in 2017, the end of 2017, when they passed the tax bill. We've seen a shift in who the buyers are for tax-free bonds. Banks used to be very large buyers of tax exempt bonds, but when they lowered the tax rate for corporations down to 21%, 22%, tax exempt bonds are not that attractive to banks anymore, and actually not for insurance companies and some of the hedge funds. So we've seen the market for buyers shrink to great extent just because they don't get the tax advantage that they used to get from before. But there's still plenty of appetite for taxes on bonds. Page nine, we'll show you the structure of our public finance. We've got the office in Wisconsin-Johnston, Pittsburgh, Orion, Scranton, and Columbus, Ohio. We've got 15 of our finances. Under financing team, we're just giving short bios. I'll look backwards. I started in Upper St. Clair Township as an intern and ended up being a manager there. I went to graduate school, punked international affairs like your manager, RJ, and got my degree in urban executive management. So RJ followed me by a few years. My son is also a graduate of Gispias School. My degree was in urban executive management. They actually have a program for city management, and that's why I went there. I was getting my master's in political science, and then we're actually on a fellowship, but realized I really wanted to go into management, so I went into Gispias and got my degree, my master's of public administration, and urban executive management. And stayed there for many years and then left and got into the investment banking career. Just got some of the bios of the other professionals. They probably will not be involved. The individual that, assuming that you do an issue, Craig Verdolles, certainly the individual now, he's our head trader. He would be responsible for pricing any issue, bring it to market, and settling issue. Experience on page 12. Just give you kind of a snapshot of the number of financings that were done back to 2012. You notice in 2018, there's a substantial drop-off in number of deals, and that's 100% attributed to the tax bill in 2017 eliminated the ability for issuers to advance refund their financings prior to the call date. All of our bond issues are sold with what's called call protection. So if you're a buyer of municipal bond, it comes with either a five to 10-year call protection. So you as the buyer, when you buy it, you want that coupon locked in for really as long as you can get it, because it's an attractive yield at the market time. And usually, that's anywhere between five and 10 years. Prior to the adoption of the tax bill in November of 2017, when you issued a $10 million bond issue with a 10-year call, you could advance refund those bonds, refinance them on a current basis, on an advanced basis, anytime prior to that 10 years. So when you have your home mortgage, you can refinance your home mortgage anytime that you want, provided there's economic savings. On a issue for, let's say, Crafton Borough, you used to be able to advance refund that prior to the call date. They eliminated that, and you can only refund them now on a current basis, which is 90 days prior to the call date. So what that did is eliminated anyone that did a new issue after that tax bill was passed in 2017, has to wait till 90 days before the call date. And you can see what that did to our firm. In 2017, we went from doing 87 financings to 33, because it eliminated the opportunity to refinance all those deals.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So then, if I understand what you're saying, the tax bill that was passed in 2017 makes this type of financing less flexible for municipalities like us?
That's correct. For anyone who issues tax exempt debt now, you're limited. Now, there is some pending legislation that's being introduced to try and get advanced refundings back, because who does it hurt? It hurts local governments, and that drives up the cost to local governments, because now, when rates drop, which they have dropped substantially, you can't take advantage and refinance your debt. And 1980, prior to 1986, you could advance refund an issue as many times as you wanted to, not just one advanced refunding. So in 86, they knocked it down to one advanced refunding, and 2017, they dropped it to no advanced refundings. It's really reduced the number of tax exempt debt in the marketplace, and that was the goal, is to reduce the amount of tax exempt securities that were available to the public in hopes that instead of buying the tax exempt instrument, they'd buy taxable instrument and have to pay taxes on it. But it has had the impact of driving up the cost, not necessarily the cost, but eliminating the opportunity for municipal issuers to take advantage of decreasing interest rates and refinance their debt. And you can see, even though we did 2.9 billion, the number of deals were down dramatically. That's because we did some very large deals in 2018. 2019's a little better year. Rates were a little bit higher, five years in 2014 and 10 years in 2009. So we will be doing more deals in 2019, but it's definitely hurt the whole marketplace. Page 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, just listed double-hundred deals for the last five years to show you that, actually, back to 2017, so just a couple of years, to show you experience, small deals, big deals, all different kinds of financings. Our experience covers all different types of financing. And then we gave you a few highlighted transactions with the large issues. Bucks County, 110 million. Pittsburgh Water and Sewer, 218 million. Those are both water revenue bonds. 2018, we showed the rankings. In 2018, we were number five for negotiated transactions and number eight for volume. Prior to 18, we were either number two or number three in those rankings, even though we're the only regional firm in Pennsylvania. The other firms there are all large New York firms or banks. So it impacted some of the rankings as well, as you would expect. And a few more case studies, just of interest. School District Council of Upper St. Clair, that's one of my financings I did this year, $57 million deal, general obligation bond. Just put a few little notes on the side to tell us why it was kind of the things that we did differently to the separators from other underwriters. Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, that's actually another deal that I did. That's a $265 million deal. Just to show, we do small deals, we do big deals. Norris Town, a parking deal. Parking deals are usually harder to get done than regular deals, because people don't have to park in parking garages, they can find other places to park. Water and sewer, you have to connect to the water, you have to connect to the sewer, you have to pay the bill. Parking's different, you don't have to do that, so they're a little bit harder to get the credit rating on. That was actually done non-rated, and we were successful in getting that marketed. And then I think the last one, that's the last one, just for disclosure, that we have to include in our presentations. That's a big, excuse me, a big overview of what my firm does. If you have any specific questions, if I don't answer anything, I'd be happy to answer. Before I move to a little overview of what your options are, should you decide to enter the market. Anyone have any questions on the market or on the firm, anything that I went over?
I do. I actually have a follow-up to Ms. Perry's point. You're stating that the financial change in the tax code has made refinancing municipal debt less flexible, and you gave the example of refinancing your home mortgage, correct? However, I'm wondering what the rates are at this moment, and if that's the case, and it's less flexible, would it be equally as prudent to maybe time it up when rates are low, so that if rates are low, so that worrying about refinancing isn't such a long-term something we're not going to have to plan for?
The answer is yes, but with a caveat.
Okay.
Right now, tax rates are extremely favorable. Last year, we were on a course to have three tax hikes, 25 basis points increases this year. I don't know if you can remember back in October, Powell, the chairman of the Fed, gave a speech that said they were going to continue on the path of doing rate increases, and that they were going to continue liquidating the surplus treasury securities that the Fed had bought over the years, and they built up several trillion dollars' worth of municipal securities and taxable treasuries. And when they bought those, that took supply out of the marketplace and kept rates low. And they started raising rates. And then, I'm sure you recall, if you have a 401(k), that the stock market kind of tanked in December, big time, and that was because of the fear that they were going to continue to increase rates, which they did another 25 basis points in December. But then after that, the Fed made a statement that they were going to start reviewing the data more closely, and that we're not going to continue the path of automatically selling $50 billion worth of securities every month. Rates have come down dramatically. The 10-year right now is at about a 220, which is probably close to its low, and I can't tell you how long. So it's very, very favorable for people that are ready to issue debt.
So you touched on a lot of globally kind of overarching points there, Chairman Powell, the Fed, and in the sense of where we might fit into the larger scheme of things. Obviously, I'm not monitoring the Fed every day. I'm wondering how that would affect, so your answer is then yes, it would be the time, because rates are the lowest?
It is. The caveat is there's three requirements when you issue municipal debt. The first requirement is you have to spend or commit to spend 5% of the bond proceeds within six months. So if you do a $5 million deal, you have to spend $250,000, commit to spend $250,000 within six months. You have to spend 85% of the proceeds of $5 million within three years, and you have to move forward with due diligence. You can't just borrow because rates are low and then not spend the money, or not move forward to the project. But the other negative is that if you're not ready to spend your money while you're carrying that debt, you're not spending it, you're paying, let's say, an average interest rate of 3%. So you have that money invested, to make it easy, let's say you've got $5 million. So you're paying 3% on $5 million, but you have the $5 million minus cost of issuance invested, but that interest rate is maybe 1% or 1 and 1/4%. So you've got negative carry, the difference between 3% and 1 and 1 and 1/4% that you have to pay. So the perfect scenario is you get your project ready, you do your financing, and you start spending your money.
When you say project ready, and I look at the case studies that you've provided us, do you have any recent examples of things that fit more of a footprint of what we are here in Crafton Borough and what those proceeds have been used towards? I see in the recent PA financing experience on pages 13 to 15, that some, there's a lot of school districts and cities in the list, but I'm not seeing any kind of small-ish to medium-sized type boroughs such as ours. If you've got spring to mind, the closest things I could see are Beijing or...
Well, that's not because they don't have projects, it's just that, when's the last time Crafton did a bond issue?
I don't know. I'll leave that to other folks.
You haven't done a bond issue, I could talk to you.
I don't believe we've had a bond issue.
In 35 or 40 years.
Right.
You've done either bank loans or leases.
I guess not, just in the 50s and 60s.
You just haven't had the need to borrow a large enough bond issue where you would have to access the bond market.
What I'm leading to, my question is, and I'll get to the point, is that would such things that are prescribed or recommended to us by the engineers be used in the category of things that we can spend on with the 5%?
Absolutely.
Okay. So whatever essentially that we have from Gateway, that they deem necessary, that we're having a hard time financing on our own and going year to year, would fit that bill?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't want to take the air out of the room, so, anyone else?
That's a good question. That's a good question. What I did was just a little synopsis of the funding options that you can consider. We've been led to believe that you have projects ranging anywhere between $5 and $10 million, and depending on the final project's chosen, that that could be structured, really, I've given you three options, 20, 25, and 30. And obviously, the shorter the term of the loan, the less interest you pay, the longer the term of the loan, the more interest you pay. Conversely, the shorter the term of your bond issue, the higher your debt service is going to be, and the longer the term of bond issue, the more you're going to pay in interest, and the longer you're going to pay it. Rates would be locked in at the time of the issue. Budget impact, in 19, you're making the final payment on an outstanding loan, and that's $137,000. So in 2020, you're going to have a window in your budget, so you're not going to have that debt you're going to have to pay. So if you were to issue some debt in 2019, you wouldn't start paying on it until 2020, and you would have a gap of debt service that's gone away of $137,000. So if you did a bond issue, your debt service was $137,000, there would be no budgetary impact. So that's why I say that that $137 can be used to offset the total cost of the project. And then on the next page, I've given you some scenarios. If you're about $5 million for 25 years and $10 million for 25 years, or $5 million and $10 million for 20 years, what's the debt service, minus the $137,000 and the new budget impact, and then the millage or bills required to cover that debt? So the extreme is if you borrowed $10 million for 20 years, you would have to, without having other revenues available, you would have to increase mills by 2.11, and if you borrowed $5 million for 25 years, it'd be just a little over half a mill for $5 million. There's a lot of different options, I've just shown you the range and the different options that are available in order to mitigate any tax increase if one is needed, depending on the month that you borrow.
Let me ask another question. So I am wondering if your firm can supply to the Borough for just informational purposes, any kind of data that would touch upon. So what are, what do you guys see impacting the revenues in boroughs that take on projects such as this? Is there any increase in taxable income coming into the Borough, because the investment has caused, just to say, prices to rise over a particular period, and therefore, you know, we're spiking more money, we're getting more money in from the debt spike? Or do you guys have any kind of information that would show anything like that?
That's really hard to quantify.
Okay.
Really hard to quantify.
Do you have anything anecdotal?
I would imagine it would be extremely hard to quantify, since we don't even have a project on the table that we can measure against.
Okay. So Mike, do you have?
Well, I think if, for example, you're making improvements that would entice people to move into the township.
Right.
Upper St. Clair put in a $28 million recreation center.
Okay.
There's over 10,000 members, believe it or not, the majority of them are from out of the township. But why do people move to Upper St. Clair? A great school district, recreation center, no sidewalks, people didn't want sidewalks in Upper St. Clair, they didn't want streetlights. Why do people want to move to Crafton? You're close to the airport, your tax rate is low, I don't know what your recreation facilities are. In order to generate additional revenue, you have to bring in either industrial, commercial, or residential. So if any of the projects that you're considering would entice people to move in for those reasons, then you could say, well, we've put new roads in here, and now we're going to get a new development, and there are going to be 20 homes in there, and those homes are going to sell for $250,000 apiece, and they're going to be assessed at X, and they're going to bring in X money. But that's really hard to do. Typically, when we do a bond issue, we talk to the community development department and find out number of building permits, potential developments, and all that goes in, not to figure out what new revenue is going to come in, but to provide information to the rating agency, the worthiness, the financial backbone of the community, that it's growing and there's going to be the revenue to support the issue. Does that make sense?
Yes. May I ask a question?
Sure.
So as regards to different sources of revenues that these different municipalities and authorities have taken and they use to pay for debt services, the Borough of Crafton has a sewer fund and a dedicated road fund.
From where?
And one of the things that I'd be concerned about is the overall impact in our ability to borrow and use those different resources to fund either, if it was a bond or a loan, to fund the required infrastructure improvements that we're going to have, making under the various consent orders that are coming down the pike. And so I was just curious how typical it is for municipalities to hybridize where those proceeds are coming from, or does it not really matter to the market, or is it right into, into the debt service that these revenues are going to be coming from, the sewer user fees, or from a dedicated road tax, et cetera?
As long as there's surplus revenues and not revenues that are needed for ongoing operations and maintenance, I think the rating agencies would frown upon if you were taking money from the storm service system and using it for something not related to storm servers and then not keep up the maintenance.
Right.
Or improvements on storm servers, but if you can show historically you run a surplus, and you're going to use those surplus funds for other improvements in the community?
Yeah, my focus would be that if we were to ever take out any debt, that would be to go towards servicing those public needs, the sewers and the roads. And those are the, and just so everybody knows where I'm coming from, and if that's something that we would endeavor upon as a community, that, you know, we have, we have those two, two funds available to finance, and one of the things that I've viewed over my tenure here and as a member of the community is, we tend to pay a higher incremental cost to get projects done and spread them out over multiple years' budgets, and the cost of doing the project goes up, or the political willpower to complete a project diminishes. So in order to achieve the ultimate end, which is to complete projects, I'm viewing this as a tool to facilitate those types of improvements.
I just thought of another example. We got funded to do a $28 million financing on Lancaster, County Lancaster, and they're building a parking garage, but adjacent to the parking garage, they've got another building, and they're going to put in commercial space and they do a renovation of the downtown area. So they're cleaning up their downtown area, bringing in additional retail office space to spice up the downtown area and attract more people to their center city. So that's an example of how they're using tax exempt debt to try and revitalize their downtown area.
So on that note, then, what, because I'm new at this kind of stuff, and so some of this is a little bit over my pay grade, so you'll have to pardon my line of questions if they're not, you know, I guess they say there's no stupid questions, but here comes one. Is there anything?
I've heard it before.
Yeah. So what restrictions are there on what we can use to spend, like, just what we would use this money for? Is there anything in particular, or could it be used to say, in addition to, you know, do some roads and sewer repairs and maybe economic development, you know, help the municipal partners, like the fire department, police department, or any kind of library or anything that is not?
Public purpose.
Okay.
Public purpose.
So anything?
With a useful life.
Right.
Roads, sewers, swimming pools, libraries, police stations, anything that serves the public.
So there's a discussion between you and the manager a couple of months ago about municipal debt limits, and could you go into that a little more so we can broadly understand what municipality is limited to in this?
Go ahead, RJ. I think you can answer that now.
Okay. So I think what you're thinking of here is a local government unit that acts, so it's just a fancy little sheet that you fill out that helps you establish what they refer to as your borrowing base, which is essentially your revenues averaged over the last three years, net revenues, so you have to take some certain things out, like fiduciary payments or things that come in from state aid and whatnot. I mean, I have to go through the list, but the point being, you narrow it down a bit to really what you're taking in for fees, taxes, you know, services. I mean, I have to go through the list, but point being, you narrow it down a bit to really what you're taking in for fees, taxes, you know, services. You take that average over three years and you multiply it by two point two five percent. And that is what you get for your debt limit. Now, there, there's another type of debt that I don't remember the name exactly of that you may recall. There's one that's just straight debt and then there's another one that's for?
There could be self liquidated debt.
Yes, so I think that debt limit is a tad higher. But off the top of my head, I believe our debt limit is somewhere around eight, nine, maybe nine million, just to be conservative. I mean, certainly not much above that with our current revenue structure. Of course, if we did something to increase revenues, that might increase as well. But that includes things that aren't just the bond. So any vehicles that you're financing, any other general obligation notes that are not bond issues. It all kind of adds up. I, I'm, I'm thinking of the debt that's in the sewer fund for the pen best, that might not count against.
One, if, if you spend two million dollars on sewer improvements, but you're going to pay for it with user fees, your engineer would certify that that self liquidated debt would count against your debt limit.
So we would, we would take out the two pen best loans, which were halfway through paying off. So we would mainly have, in this context, our vehicle loans, the Duncan loan, the final payment was, I think I just signed it the other week, which felt great. But so we have, we have a pretty low usage of our debt limit currently. But of course, if you're taking on a debt of this size for, you know, twenty, twenty-five years, that significantly influences what you can do.
Right.
With the rest of your borrowing power. So if that's kind of answering your question.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Because I, I think it's important for everybody to understand that we need to be conservative and, and understand that just because you can borrow up to X amount doesn't mean that you should, that you really should evaluate the broader picture. And let's say there's an emergency in the, in the, in the future that requires a special debt issuance to accommodate something catastrophic that would happen. You know, what is a safe borrowing range for your municipality with our debt, debt income ratio? So I was just curious, or is that, does that nine, nine to ten million dollars account for that? Or is that sort of like, is that?
Not really.
Like, I would like to understand, like, what is the stress test that we should achieve? Because I think that goes into the broader capital planning for, for the community.
I mean, it just really depends on where you are year to year. If you've historically had a large surplus, then you certainly have room to take on more debt service without, you know, having a debt. For us, we've increased services in the last year or two to the point where, you know, we ran a deficit this year. And yeah, it's something the reserves can cover if maybe. The Duncan loan coming off.
Could you go into that a little more? It, right now, it's a projected deficit with what we had budgeted from the last, from our last approved budget.
Do, so do you want that including sort of the one-time expenses that are coming off after this year? Or excluding more than that?
I think it's.
Okay, so it was about a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit this year. The Duncan loan payment this year, because we only had to pay, I think, half of one, we normally did, it was one thirty-seven. So there are some other things that would come off, like two police car purchases that we had budgeted since we didn't make the, the normal police car purchase last year. So that's another thirty-five thousand that would come off. There are just little pieces of things, you know, six thousand here, another five thousand we're replacing here and there. But essentially.
Personnel that we, we budgeted, you know, for like the additional code enforcement, additional office.
Yes, I mean, things, things like that. But I mean, even assuming that, that all things being equal.
Right.
And maybe, you know, hopefully we won't, every single year, you need to spend as much on blight demo because eventually you think you get down all the houses that are, you know, of blatant danger. But even including the ten months for the benefit salary, whatever, of the discussion around the tenth officer. I think our, our deficit was.
And code enforcement.
Well, I, I wasn't even counting code enforcement because that was ten months of that as well. But so I'm, I'm just going off of what we put together a budget time. You've got a range of maybe around thirty-five thousand dollars of deficit. Now, that's assuming we spend every single dollar and that we take in only exactly the amount that was budgeted. I had to rerun a lot of the revenue formulas when we were composing the twenty nineteen budget. It's going to take until the end of the year to see if they pan out. And the sewer fund is certainly on target for, you know, the new projection that shows essentially that, you know, we had a couple hundred thousand that were sitting there for special projects that we were just kind of putting in the banks as surplus. So I, I mean, having a little deficit cushion like that at the end of the day is certainly not the end of the world. I mean, that's give or take. If, if you cut costs and end up not having to replace, you know, just for that, I don't know, vehicle part or something. Yeah, you end up flush anyway, you know, you don't really have to worry about it too much. And certainly year to year, you can spend down reserves on things that are appropriate, whether it's a grant match or just a one-time purchase and then perhaps the reserves will double the time. You just kind of have to keep an eye on it. So kind of looking at seeking a stress test. I mean, I, I could, I could tell you that just based on our budget right now, even with the Duncan loan coming out, I wouldn't recommend immediately committing to a large debt service without making some choices about where revenues are going to come from. Whether it would be, assuming that you're going to get increased business taxes or, you know, some of the work that we're doing with the warranty tax might bring in a lot more in terms of mercantile, business privilege, just, you know, sort of that missing revenue. We're not going to really know what that impact is until at least the end of this year, maybe a little more time just because things are paid annually, quarterly. It takes a lot of time to do the legwork to find what's missing. So I mean, the, our financial condition is, is fine as is. We do need to make some moves to generate new revenue to keep up with inflation in the long term.
Right.
But right now, either it's looking at the amount of millage that comes into the general fund, whether that's, you know, a lot of places don't use a road fund at all. The paving program goes up and down and the general fund as part of, you know, whatever their annual needs are. Not that I'm saying that's what we need to do, but it's just an approach that a lot of different municipalities prefer. Or, you know, you can raise the millage and just dedicate that to the general fund to generate sort of that budget room to do it, but a debt service. But either way, it's, either you spend less to make room for it or you reallocate the current tax rate or you raise taxes to pay for a debt service. So however much you want to raise that is how much you can afford. Because right now, we're kind of, we're on the grade, you know. It's, it's what we're taking in is essentially what we're spending.
So I think it's important for, for the planning commission and council to understand that, you know, we have all these different wants and needs and we need to establish what are the needs versus the wants? Because endeavoring on, you know, something along the lines of a bond comes with cost. And to issue this type of debt is, has to be, you know, obviously budgeted for. But there's just the owl of the gate cost to get this on the books is how much of a percentage of the actual debt? Let's say if you were taking out five million for twenty-five years, what is the, you know, allocate cost just to get you guys to issue something along those lines?
I don't understand the question.
How much does it cost, the voting is going to go to the market for us to, if we wanted a bond?
Let's say you did a ten million dollar issue. I don't think you're going to, but let's just use, because the math is easier.
Right.
You're, the, the way financings work is if you issue ten million dollars with the bonds, you pay the cost of issuance and we take a fee.
Right.
We give you amount minus the cost of issuance, include, including the bond discount. So if you did a ten million dollar issue, I'm going to estimate that your total cost, because you've got rating and I wanted to make a comment about rating because the rating kind of controls what you can borrow. Because if you borrow more than what the rating agency thinks you can afford, they're going to give you a rating that is not going to be favorable for market to get good rates. So you're going to have someone watching over what you're trying to do and put a rating on that, hopefully an investment grade rating, in order to have interest rates that make the project feasible. And if you were to come in and say you wanted to do nine million dollars for a project and that's very close to your debt limit, you'd have a hard time giving a good rating for that unless you could show that you're going to do a tax increase and you're going to have other revenues to support that.
And just a question before. If you are doing.
I'm just waiting for the approximate number.
If you, if you do a tax, if you have to do a tax increase to incorporate a debt service, is that something that needs to go to referendum?
No.
Or, okay, is there any type of referendum specific bond? All right.
And, and I'll answer the other question in a minute. But the rating agencies love issuers that do tax increases and not use their surplus. Because they'd like to see all issuers, school districts, everybody have a cushion and a fund balance of anywhere between, depending on what type of issue it is. A revenue bond issue could have a hundred and thirty percent coverage, not just one times coverage, but thirty percent. They'd like your fund balance to be ten percent. I don't know what your fund balance is, but they'd like that to be ten percent, but.
Of, of the, the full issue?
No, no, of, of your budget.
Oh.
Of your budget. You're in good shape.
Yeah, I, I think about at least three to four months worth of expenses.
Yeah, you're, you're financially, you're very good shape. It's because you don't have, really have any debt. That's why. Cost of issuance, I'm going to estimate a hundred to a hundred twenty-five thousand. The rating fee is higher based on the size of the issue. You have to pay your solicitor, you have to pay bond counsel, you have to pay rating, you have to pay printing, you have to pay underwriter to sell the bonds, to structure the issue, to get it rated. This would be a first time issue, so you have probably a little more effort in putting the offering documents together because you haven't done any. The best thing would be to have a very strong official statement. Before you did the official statement, you do a preliminary official statement and that gives all the information on the bond issue. And it also gives all the demographic and financial information about Crafton. And that will take time to develop and do it in a professional way that represents a very solid management, a very solid board, council members. They look at everything. They look at management from the manager's point, they look at the board, the management on the board, the skills on the board. All that comes into play.
So and then if we're talking?
The fees would be standard there. I mean, they're not going to be crazier than any other issue.
Hundred point five K for a ten mil?
Yeah, that, that, that's just.
Approximate, that's.
I'm not going to tell you what solicitor's fee is going to be or what bond counsel's fee is going to be.
What's it going to be?
I like it, but.
So that's plus those other expenses.
Well, that's included.
That's included, so that's just a rough idea of you. So if we're in that, half of that, if we're talking half a mil, half a million rather, or five million, I'm sorry, put half the ten million, are we talking a larger percentage?
No, it's actually lower because the bond discount, let's say the bond discount is one percent. So one percent on ten million would be a hundred thousand dollars. If it's five hundred, if it's a five million dollar deal, it'd be fifty thousand dollars. So the bond discount is the largest single component.
Okay.
So the smaller the bond issue, the less you pay.
Okay, so it would be in the range of half of the hundred twenty-five or a little bit more than half of the one?
For five million?
Yes.
It'd be less.
Less than half.
Yeah, no, it would, it would be, again, let's say if the bond discount is one percent.
Right.
The bond discount would be fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Then you're done on solicitor's fee, I'm not going to tell you what that is because I don't know. Bond counsel fee, printing is eight thousand dollars, rating is going to be ten or twelve thousand dollars. They're all standard fees that, that you would get on any issue.
Yeah, so my question is, is whether you're borrowing a dollar or ten million, certain of those fees are going to be the same regardless of the amount, is that right?
The only one that's going to be less is the bond discount.
Right, okay.
But there's the same amount of work required for a one million dollar issue than it is for a fifty million dollar issue.
So what we're trying to ascertain is a smaller amount, our total out of pocket will be more than fifty percent of the approximate one.
I think that's correct.
Thank you.
No one never does a bond issue because of the cost of issuance.
No, but we're here to learn what, what's involved.
Well, as, assuming you go forward, that will all be presented and be approved by an uncle prior to. And none of this is done in the vacuum or without public disclosure and discussion.
Having enough education to know whether we even want to put the first step on that path.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is very preliminary. And as you get closer, if you move forward, you would start to come in with a sizing of the bond issue. And then it would be a lot easier to give you very accurate estimates on what your cost of issuance are going to be.
Just for the record, to Mr. Emmett Knowles' question about my fee is I usually charge half of the bond counsel fee because I have to do little, very little work, bond counsel does a lot when it's typically when I do.
So if they're charging a hundred twenty-five years?
Just the bond attorney. So if the bond attorney is going to charge you twenty-five hundred dollars to do his work, I would just, I'd charge you twelve fifty. Just half of what the bond counsel charges.
I see. That's pretty standard.
Yeah.
Mike, just to clarify a point, you stated just a minute ago, nobody ever did not do an issuance because of the cost to originate, or something to that effect. And that got my mind thinking that there's a couple of terms in here that I think I might need unpacked because I'm not financially literate aside from what I think, you know, I own a home, I have some investments and so on and so forth, but nothing to this magnitude. And I've not been involved in anything like this. So with, with a home sale being my closest or harder sale, for those who buy cars, being a kind of a closest analogy, we could use that to?
Home's a good one.
Okay, so if, um, sorry. Would, would, so your analogism is role as to what, a real estate agent, so to speak? Someone who's working?
Well, no, we, we, we do more than that in terms of selling the actual bonds to retail and institutional investors. But in real estate, in a real estate transaction, every time you look at your, your fees when you, when you buy or sell a home, you've got buyer and seller and there's a ton of fees all the way down the line. But no one doesn't sell their home or buy home because they have to pay all those fees.
Right.
And they are, those are disclosed prior to you doing the deal as well.
Right.
It's just the cost of doing the business. And, and they're, they're standard fees that you will pay regardless if you use my firm, your solicitor's firm, bond counsel firm, you're going to pay them one way or the other.
So I just want to maybe try and clarify a point because heck, maybe I'm wrong in understanding it. But from what I heard, when it comes to the, essentially the origination fees, let's say, I know I'm, I'm just using easy numbers here, it's not real numbers, but let's say they're a hundred thousand for the origination fee. And you've taped on ten million dollars of, of bond issuance. It's not that you would necessarily have to pay that upfront, it's that you would end up with bond proceeds of nine million, nine hundred thousand?
Less, less all the cost of issuance.
Yes, so, so, so it's not like you're pulling that out of your pocket.
Which is exactly what happens in a home sale, you receive a proceeds of your house, you sell it at a fifty thousand dollar profit, you get forty-five thousand dollars if your guy's origination fee is five grand. So we don't, we would not have to worry about or equivocate over one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars versus seventy-five thousand dollars because it's going to be on the back end of this process. Is that correct?
Yeah, you get the gross amount plus expenses.
I think it's more relevant in, are you borrowing enough money at the end of the day to cover all your projects after you take the origination fee?
And we also take into account interest earnings on the proceeds because they're not going to sit idle. Typically, your drawdown, your construction schedule, depending on the projects, is going to be maybe eighteen months. So you're going to have that money invested for probably nine, an average of nine months. So you're going to have interest on it as well. And you can either include those interest earnings or not include the interest earnings and use that as a buffer for contingencies. I mean, there's just a lot of different things you can do.
Excuse me, would you like to ask a question?
Sure, why not? If you could just come up and address.
Up here?
Yeah, address council, name, address.
My name is Bill Ryan, I live at fifty-eight North Family Street. Longtime resident, first time caller.
Longtime resident, first time caller. I am in the mortgage business and I understand about the bonds. I just have one question for you. This is a small community. We don't have a lot of money, where this isn't cranberry, we don't have those kind of numbers. We're not going to get a high rating on this bond. There's just no way. Give me an idea, just so I can, they can understand what kind of interest we're going to wind up paying on this. Where are we going to be? Give me a range, anything that will tell us what that payment is. We've got, I get the closing costs, but let's go to the other. Well, it, it, it depends on what the rating is for the bond issue. Assume the worst. Well, if, if it's the worst, you probably wouldn't even do the deal, but you're not going to... Don't, I'm looking for something, I need to grasp. This is going to be a two percent loan. It's going to be over ten, isn't it? No, absolutely not.
No, don't, don't do it if it's that high.
Your interest, your, your interest expense, I'm going to say, average, your net interest expense, AIT, is probably going to be less than three and a quarter percent. No, what do you mean by that? We're not making any money. It's what would be... No, you will make, you will make money on the proceeds, but what's called your true interest cost. So, the, the first principle that you would retire on your bond issue, the way bond issues are structured is, in order to have level debt, you have smaller amounts the first few years, and then it goes up to the later years because you're paying more interest in the earlier. So, you may have zero principal the first two or three years, you can go three years without having any interest. So, alls you would pay is interest through the first year. So, let's say the fourth, fourth year, you have twenty thousand worth of bonds. The interest rate on that twenty thousand piece of bonds that you as an individual investor, your rate may be less than one percent. If you do a twenty-five year bond in two thousand thirty-four, that rate may be three point two five. So, what we do is we calculate the averages of all those that come up of the net interest cost. Okay, and you can get those rates even at a, even the fact that they're not, there's no tax advantage for these investors? That's... Well, no, there is the tax, they're going to be tax free. Triple tax here, they're not going to pay state tax, they're not going to pay federal tax, they're not going to pay local tax.
If it helps ballpark, the, from similar sized communities with a similar amount of surplus deficit year to year, I've seen three and a half as an interest rate recently. It might be lower just because the market's a little more favorable now.
Three and a half over twenty years?
Twenty thirty, yeah.
Twenty, twenty-five? You're still talking, your, your interest on that original, if it's ten million, it's going to be well over a million by the time you're done. So, you, you did get the chance to see this, but if you did five million for twenty-five years, you're going to pay a hundred and seventy-two thousand, one seventy-five a year for twenty-five years. These are year letters? I don't have my calculator with me or my phone. If someone wanted to take one seventy-two thousand times twenty-five...
But that would be the difference after the Duncan loan payment, so...
No, no, that, that's... You can use the top number. Yeah, you use the top number, three oh nine, one seventy-five, I'm sorry, times twenty-five, just take three hundred times twenty-five. Minus five million.
Wait, it was one seventy-two, it's only seventy-two thousand.
Well, we're trying to get the interest amount, not the total principal interest.
So, times...
Nine million. So, it'll be about nine million for five million.
That's too high.
That seems too high.
That's way too high.
You're saying, okay, you're saying three, three oh nine for a year, ten years is three million? So, three, six...
I'm sorry, I said...
Okay, seven, seven five, seven five.
If you say five billion times three and a half percent...
Yeah, well, come on, because it's, it's seven five million over twenty-five years.
I've done a lot of this, okay?
Do you want to use this?
You, you are, the world is in great financial shape. The issue is whether you're willing to raise taxes to pay the debt service or what you're going to do.
Yeah, we'd like them not to raise taxes.
That, that's a choice every municipality has to decide. Every school district, every water and sewer, every turnpike, every county.
Right, well, and let me say, going back to what I've been saying, is I prefer not to raise taxes, I prefer to use the user fees and the road tax that we already have and apply that towards the debt service. So, again, that's...
He already told you, you can't do that.
That's not true.
That's not what he said. This guy, who, who did?
Mike. That's not what Mike said.
No, as long as you're still maintaining and providing funds for the sewers and the roads.
So, in other words, Mike, if we use some proceeds of ten million dollars to fix what's coming down in the consent decree at one time, would that not quantify as using those proceeds? So, we, the money that comes, if we take every sewer fee and all of the other fees and put it in one bucket and use that to pay the interest on this debt, because we've already maintained the road to the sewers with this money, that would count as...
No, we have not maintained them. We have made, if you're talking roads and sewers, the minute you put them down, you have to continue to maintain them.
That's correct.
And so, there is that...
What Mike is saying is you can't use a hundred percent of your sewer money to, to pay the loan. Do you ever have enough money to continue to maintain?
To keep them in good shape once you do it.
Here's what I think. You answered my question. I think you're way ahead of where you should be.
Correct.
I mean, you're talking about hypotheticals and other scenarios that may never come into play. What typically before, when we get involved, it's in the planning process, and you know what the project is, or you have a really good idea of what the project, or projects are going to be. And then we start to model and come up with different alternatives, whether it's twenty years, twenty-five years, eighteen years, and have real market data in order to be able to give you estimates that are very market driven and something that you can evaluate and say, we can afford this, we can't afford this, we can use this much of our surplus, we don't want to use this much of our surplus, we're going to have to do a tax increase of X, or we're going to have to do a, a tax increase of Y and use revenues from the sewer and the road program. But this is so preliminary, I, I'm reluctant to even give you estimates because it could be so far off base, it's not really relevant. You really need to narrow down what your projects are and the timing of your projects. And it'd be so much easier to evaluate when you have good data in front of you.
So, basically, you're saying here, you're saying that you're, you're way too early in the process because there is no account with council at large, there is no agreement about what we ought to be doing, how much we ought to be doing, and what we ought to be spending on. And so, we've got work to do that could take us a year or two at this point.
So, I would say that it's important that we have this works up so when we're in our planning phase, that we understand what our limitations are and how we're going to redevelop and pay for the projects that are on, on the table.
You may have just said they were too preliminary because we don't have projects.
But we do have projects. We have a...
I contend that we do not have any projects that we have discussed as a council that have any kind of agreement or strategies.
Right, so, this is part of the discussion to allow everybody to understand how this all works, right? So, I think this was a good preliminary meeting, and now that we have this basis of education as to how this works, we can now look at all the things that are on the table, and if you have anything to bring to the table, you have a better understanding of how, you know, we need to work the budget and work our financial tools to ensure that we can afford our wants and needs. And again, it's important for us to differentiate between what is a want and, and the need. So, we can sit here all day long as planning commission and think of pie in the sky ideas, but if you don't have a, a firm understanding of how the process works with regards to financing those ideas, you're not going to be able to move forward. And same thing goes for council. If we don't understand how we're going to move forward, you know, is a bond even a good option when there's options such as Penn Vest? And so, for the sewer type projects, or looking at other loans, there may be other vehicles such as loans to finance the construction, the reconstruction of the roadways. So, it's very important that we understand the interplay and how, you know, a service provider such as Boning Scattergood or whoever that may be would go to a bond market, or is this even the, the right option? Not to waste everybody's time, but I don't think it is a waste of time because now we have a basis of, of understanding.
If you had a very preliminary wish list or want list, it's very easy to size up a bond issue with today's rates and say, based on your three million dollars or four million or whatever it is, based on today's rates and cost of issuance, here's what the debt is going to be. And then you and RJ have to sit down and determine what you want to do, whether that list is too much, you don't have enough revenues that you want to use, you don't want to raise taxes. But that's very easy. You have to have a starting point of projects that you're considering, whether it's two months from now or six months from now.
Yeah.
In order to have a meaningful discussion.
I, I just want to make sure everyone in this room is absolutely clear and on the record, I will go on the record. I asked Steve and Phil to reach out to this gentleman to bring him to start this process simply because I thought it would be in the best interest of council and the planning committee as kind of working in tandem to Phil's point, that I found it frustrating as a member of council to constantly be debating about this thing called a bond or a debt without having any numbers in front of us, without having anyone who is an expert to bounce ideas off of or at least communicate our wants and need list to. So, you know, I think it's to Mike's point that, yeah, it's preliminary that he's here, but I don't think even Mike would, I'd like Mike to speak for himself on this, but, you know, this is the first step to anything. So, this is not any kind of done deal, this is just simply an open conversation, and Ms. Perry asked to have us all sit here tonight, and so I think it's a good starting point that we have this open conversation and have it on the record, have it recorded so we can refer to it, we can have, we have the data here so that if and when, because it will happen, at some point down the line in council, you know, one side of the issue pulls out bond for or against, we can now have some actual data to work off instead of just saying, well, I think, or I feel that, because those things I think are counterproductive to form a consensus in moving down the road in what we are, whether we want to do it or not. As to Mike's point, I mean, we can look at this and see all the communities in here that have invested in themselves, all the sewer authorities, all the water, all the school districts. So, we just have to go back and start asking ourselves if, if we actually want to see some investment in the community and what it might look like, and bringing him in is just that first step of the process.
Yeah, I, I don't think apology is the right word, but I, I did come prepared to talk the detail to answer some of your questions, so I'm, I'm, I'm sorry about that. We're actually doing three financings this week that are under ten million dollars that will give you good examples of where interest rates are. So, I'll provide that to RJ tomorrow, and I will give you a breakdown of cost of issuance, estimated cost of issuance. So, you have some idea. I mean, they, they won't be exactly the same, but they'll, they'll be neighborhood. The rates will definitely be market rates, and that'll give you some idea. And then I'll break it down, how much you're paying in interest and how much you're paying for principal.
Do you have any other questions, Perry?
No.
Okay. Any one in the planning commission or anyone else in the audience have anything they want to add or say?
No, I think we're good.
So, RJ, have you been able to share some of the files from the engineering with the rest of the planning commission yet?
I don't think that they requested them.
I made, I made a request a month ago to have them shared. I like the planning commission to have all that information because it's important for everybody to understand, you know, when we say, you know, it's going to cost eight hundred thousand dollars to reconstruct, let's say, Belvidere for instance, as is with brick, and get that, you know, completely reconstructed, and we say, well, it's going to take us, you know, fifteen years to get reconstructed. Well, the reality is, we don't, by the time you get to the end of Belvidere, you got to start over. And this generation's clearly saying to the next, to the generation that's been here for thirty years, you're expecting us to take thirty-year mortgages out, all right, invest in your community and spend our nights and weekends working on these homes that need the work and use our cash and our, our equity, and we want to see that the municipality's willing and able to invest in itself if need be to complete the projects that have been presented to us. We have a lot on our plates, we have a, a wish list of upwards to twenty million dollars worth of projects. The borough manager presented to me a project of, of, if we wanted a new municipal building, it cost upwards of five million dollars just for a municipal building, all right? Is that a want or is that a need? Now, we as a planning commission and we as a council need to figure out what direction we're going to take the ship. Are we going to invest in a new municipal building or are we going to invest in curb appeal, literal curbs in this municipality? Are we going to invest in the cartways that convey us to our homes where we're investing our time and money? So, it's important that we understand what that cost basis is so we understand, just as when we sat down with our realtor and our mortgage provider, what that was going to cost. Principal, the amortization schedule, and we all need to understand that what it's going to cost. If that means over a thirty-year note or a twenty-five year note or a twenty-year note, that means the time value of money was four million bucks to borrow that on a five million dollar, uh, uh, principal, then that's what it costs. But we need to understand how that all works out. So, that's all I'm asking is when we say, hey, I want my road done and I would like it done in the next eighteen months, well, hey, if you want it all with brick, it's going to cost X, Y, and Z versus it's going to cost this to be, you know, resurfaced with asphalt, and, and this, this is the delta, and that's, that's what it's going to cost because we have to understand what the money costs in real time and then over the long run. That's what's really been frustrating as a member of council and as a member of the planning commission, just as a member of this community, is the fact that we fail to understand that we have to potentially work outside of cash flow. We have this desire in the borough of Crafton to try to work in, in cash flow. We talked with the borough manager, and she noted, well, we have quite the sizable road fund. Well, why do we have such a sizable road, road fund? It was identified by prior councils that there was a lack in investment in the roads, and therefore, they tethered, you know, they, they set the millage on the road fund. I mean, they, they set a road tax, and they said, you shall spend this X number, you know, every year based off of the mills and the, and the value of real estate in this municipality. And that's what we are doing. Is that enough? You know, if we want to relax that, you know, where, where are the costs? You know, we, we often hear that we have a paving program. Well, the reality is, we really need to have a paving program and a reconstruction program because really paving is just maintenance. Reconstruction is reconstruction of roads that are a hundred twenty years old, and we have to understand those are significant costs, we can try to be creative in how we're going to address that. And past administrations and past managers have tried working with the water company, the gas, the gas company, and try and enable every which way to get reconstruction in the budget and really, you know, putting those, the onus on our utility providers to do a lot of the heavy lifting. And the reality is, we're running out of runway there, and we have to figure out as a planning commission, as a council, what that is going to look like. So, when you say we don't have any projects, yes, we do have a lot of projects, we just become comatose, we, 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 it, with, with regards to the sheer cost to do it. And when you look at Mr. Amundold's favorite project, the Clearview project, that was a project that was well on the books well before I ever moved in this municipality, well before Ms. Ryan sold me my home up there. You know, it's, it's upwards of one point, one point five, two million...
You'd have to think for me being...
Two, two million dollar project. But the reality is, there was quality control issues with that project because the way we broke it, broke it up. And what I'd like to really debate is the merit of trying to get some of these longer spread projects done in a shorter time so we have more control over... the merit of trying to get some of these longer spread projects done in a shorter time so we have more control over cost and we have more control over quality and we can return that value back to the municipality. And as you talked about, seeing return on investment, Brad, it is really difficult to see the return on investment until you start looking at the real estate numbers. When people start seeing appreciable gains in their real estate and we've seen some very substantial gains, but you know, some of the neighborhood, part of the neighborhood that don't have, you know, good infrastructure suffer. And you can see a decline or a disparity between home sales. And that was some of the data that came out of what the intern did last year. So, I think it's important that we understand the macro and microeconomics, but I don't think we should shut our mind off to the different finance options. Is bond really necessary? I don't know at this time because we need to understand, you know, maybe Penn Vest is really the best vehicle. We need to figure out, can Penn Vest fund the reconstruction of roadways curb to curb? And that's the answer is no. So, that's why you start going, well, maybe a loan from PNC like we have on other things or maybe a bond. And we have to understand, again, what is it going to cost? And what is our expectations? Is it really a one or two-year project, one to two-year process that get you to the point where you're going to the bond markets? I'd say no, we know which roadways need to be reconstructed. We know where we're going to have to put the money. The reality is, do we have the willpower to do those things and get it on the schedule and get the projects out the bit? And so, you know, it's been said that we haven't been having, you know, this information brought to council. You know, I've been trying to get the engineer to come to council and explain all the things that the manager, Mr. Kraus, the public works director, and I spoke with him about the sheer cost to get these projects done correctly and not to have to break them down into 10-year projects. Because the reality is, one of these brick streets. We have, just to your point, Phil, we have an engineering subcommittee meeting, what, tomorrow? No, that's on June 13th. No, the. The engineers coming to our council meeting. That's a regular. Next committee meeting. June 13th. Oh. Today. Well, whatever, it doesn't matter. Sorry. Yeah, whatever. The point is, I really think that it would be really beneficial for Ms. Perry, Mr. Amadou and Ms. Glasser to call in. You know, we don't have to have any debates, but just to hear more numbers about what we're dealing with and the magnitude of what we're dealing with.
For the council.
Can I say something here pretty soon?
Yeah, just to have more of an open committee.
Yes, I think we need to have it in council. We need to have more meetings because we've talked about so many different things, but there has not been the kind of work that needs to be done. You say, you know what we need to do. We know what we need to do. We know what it costs. We have issues like residents that would prefer to have brick streets.
Right.
But have we had the, you know, discussions and they really talk about the differences in whether we can afford it?
That's why I'm bringing in information.
Yeah, that's. Well, these are all things that have to happen long before this gentleman comes to us.
I just want to.
We've been here for, we've been here, Coletta, working together for three years, right? Three years, three and a half years, three and a half years. We've been talking about it off the record for a long time. Riding around together, looking at the community and figuring out, hey, what do we need to do? What do we need to do? This is the first time as a member of council that I actually had any visibility into the process and having any control over being able to bring that information. And I think the manager has been very supportive of the planning commission and of, you know, of Gateway to bring ideas forth so we can consume this information. This is just the beginning of the process. I said to Mr. Kraus, I said, you're jumping the gun, all right? But he was getting frustrated with, we can't do this, we can't do this, and we can't do this.
Nobody has said we can't do anything.
But we.
No one has said that.
No, but no, that's not you. I'm saying, when we sit down with manager and says, this project.
She hasn't said you can't do anything either as far as I know.
What's the, hold on. Qualifying this, if you say, we only have $500,000 roughly, 472. Yes. With regards to our road fund, with regards to our road fund, yes, we only have a set number of dollars to keep up with maintenance and to keep up with major infrastructure redevelopment. We only have certain amount of.
We need to develop a plan. We can't be all in at once and say, you know, we're going to do this all. We need to look at, we need to.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
A much better plan.
But you're at the table now, right?
I am at the table. We're all at the table.
Right. This is the first time since we've all been on council together that we've had an opportunity to work with the manager that's willing to include all of council and the planning commission.
You know what? You got to quit putting stuff on the manager. You know, you sat there and you said, did she get the paperwork together to give to the planning commission about the meetings that you guys? Wait a minute, I want to speak here, okay? You two council people have been meeting with Gateway engineers for a few months now, right? Once a month with the, with the public works guy and with the borough manager?
Correct.
Okay. In the past, that's never happened. In the past, borough manager and the public works guy met with Gateway engineering.
And we were in the dark. We were in the dark.
Hell, you weren't in the dark.
Yes, we were.
You were never in the dark.
Yes, we were.
Okay, so now you're, now you're.
Were you in the now?
Will you shut up and let me speak?
No, were you in the now?
Will you let me speak?
Yes.
Okay. So, you two go to the meetings and you don't bring anything back to council. And then you're going to sit here and tell, and say to us that the manager hasn't gotten the paperwork together to give to the planning commission? You guys are on this public works committee and you should be coming back telling us what? Gateway engineering. You know what you did instead? You came here and said, we had a meeting and we want to get this guy to come in and talk to us about this $10 million loan for things that we're talking about gateway engineering. We've been left in the dark. You're.
No, actually, the engineers been giving their engineer report. And do you read your engineer report? There was a.
Okay, I got a few other questions.
There's a plethora of ideas out there.
Correct.
But we've got no structure. We haven't done the work.
Correct.
To decide.
I agree with you.
What needs to be done? What are the priorities? What are the hard decisions?
I agree.
That work has to be done before we go jumping out to the bond market or to the loan market.
I have some more questions.
May I, I just want to, before we really boost this one particularly thread, I just want to clarify regarding discussing a municipal building project, that would all be part of a larger economic development effort. And if we were not leaving the space to move to somewhere else so that we could bring in commercial development, there would be no point in doing it. Just wanted to throw that out there since that's kind of a bombshell and I felt that it needed some context.
Yeah, but it is, it is something that you discussed and then we've discussed, if there's no, and just so everybody knows.
Further, our commercial development is in the comprehensive plan. That's the goal that we've all built consensus around.
Exactly. Frankly, one of my concerns is that as we look at the comprehensive plan and certain interests is that one thing like commercial development is going to get short shrift over, over infrastructure, when infrastructure worked with the consent decree and other things might not make sense for us to bundle together as quickly as some people would like. And so, I want to see a much broader discussion. I want to see more planning. I want to get more of an idea and do whatever it is we need in order and get the community involved so we know what the community wants and what the community has the stomach to pay for or not to pay for.
Coletta, they elected us to do that very thing.
You're doing it in the dark.
Nobody's doing it in the dark. We're bringing it all to life.
I have some more questions.
Actually, I'm going to make a statement here. So, Coletta, I totally and wholeheartedly agree with you. And I think it's been a long road to hoe to get us to this point where we're actually having this type of debate with two bodies. You know, we have the planning commission and we have council, right? We haven't had this type of momentum since we had the comprehensive plan, right? And now we're going to be building off the pillars of the comp plan and working towards all those things that we discussed that would be great for the community. And I want it to be completely transparent and I want people to come in, just like tomorrow, we're going to be talking about the Grandview project, all right? Do we want to pay for reconstruction? What are those costs, all right? What are the options, right? Those are the things that we want people to come in because this is a once in a generation opportunity to redo some of these streets. We're not going to go back in 30 years, you know, hopefully for another 30 years, 50 years to redo some of this stuff. So, I think it's important that this is, however you want to put it, it's not clean, it's not hygienic and how this was all going to come, come out. We, we all went to local government academy but didn't say, well, this is the most diplomatic and political way to bring it forth. I mean, what Mr. Kraus did was he ripped the Band-Aid off, all right, and he did it, right? And. And Fred, I was going to do it whether you approved of it or not. So, I can call another financing, I can call PNC Bank tomorrow and ask them to come in or at least speak to two of them.
I'm not interested in any of them. You know, my feelings from the very beginning.
I appreciate that.
But I do have some other questions. What other boroughs, have you, have you got any data or anything of this curb project? You've been talking about this curb project for a year or a year and a half.
What do you mean that curb project?
Curbs? You want to build new curbs? What's the deal?
I want to reconstruct the cartways from side to side so they actually drain.
So, are there other, do you have any data on what other municipalities have done this curb project?
Have you, have you been to Green Tree? Did you see what was going on?
No.
All right. So, they reconstructed a lot of the roadways in Green Tree to make sure the storm water goes into storm sewers and not into, or the storm system versus the sewers. I mean, they're doing separations. We are required, and from what I understand from the engineer, they're going to talk about this more tomorrow, we have to have a 10% reduction. How are we going to get the reduction? How are we going to get storm?
You know, that's something else that I disagree with. I would like to see this consent decree.
Okay.
What council person in the past signed a consent decree?
That's just for a little bit of context there. It's almost 15 years old now. Where, basically the deed.
We're not in any violation of it.
Well, so that's a complicated question. I don't know if that's necessarily the right way.
All right, well, you can skip that.
Channel in here. I would suggest that we don't discuss whether or not we're in violation of the consent decree outside of an executive session.
Okay. I want to correct something that you said. You said that Clearview Avenue was my favorite project. Well, I want to set the record clear that that was not my favorite project.
I'm being facetious. You've argued to me.
You're being facetious, but you're doing it on camera here and you're saying some things that are not true.
It's been on camera that you've fought me for the past two years on.
Yeah, I fought you on Clearview because it was never in the budget and you, it's something that you had to get done. And I finally, at the very end.
I had to get done. Your council started it. I did not start it.
My council started it. You're right. But it was something that was not in the budget and it was wasteful spending.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
And if you get your hand on $10 million, I can tell you it's going to be wasteful spending.
Can we move on to this topic? I think it's about this.
Sure.
Okay, my first thing is, are we finished with what information we need from our guest tonight before we have any other discussions?
Yes.
Should we thank him and?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Remember, I'm a former county manager.
Why you got to do this to me?
Actually, would you like to ask a question of our guest?
Don't you miss being here?
But I can believe it.
Can you guys forward and ask your questions?
Please step forward, name, address.
I'm waiting on the reading with Emily Mike. My understanding, I'm not on the inside on this, but there's like 10 or 12 projects that we would be using this bond money for to split the pipe, divert the water?
That, we have no plan at this point.
Let's assume that we have these eight to 10 projects. It can't all be done at the same time. So, if you pay to float $10 million worth of bonds, can you pay $3 million? And when you need another $3 million, take another $3 million?
Yeah, I think you mentioned earlier, there's criteria for spending 5% within six months, 85% within three years.
You're going to face a month with that size of a bond.
The only negative is that you have to pay, if, you have to pay cost of issuance every time you issue a bond. So, if you issue three $3 million bond issues, you're going to have to pay bond council three times, underwriter or a solicitor three times, printing three times, rating three times. You won't pay, the biggest fee is the underwriter's bond discount because that's only on the size of the issue. But you would have the other rating, printing, legal every time you issue debt. But you wouldn't issue $10 million worth of the bonds unless you could spend 85% of that within three years. You just wouldn't do it.
Now, it seems to me that people run into unforeseen problems and extends the time, extends the amount of money. We don't, we don't know what's over the hill. We want to put two pipes over the hill, but we don't know what's over the hill and we're going to run it. It just, it just didn't want to pay for $10 million if you're not going to use it all right away. Because you're going to have to pay 50 bucks or maybe $1,000 for every million or every thousand that you throw out there.
Yeah, I think the point is that good planning and having your finances in place is a prerequisite to getting bond issued.
That's right. These bond deals are usually reverse engineered. Council says, we want to do project A, B, and C. And it's X millions of dollars.
And it'll take this long.
Right. And then we know we can get them done within this time period that might identify. That's how you, you don't just pick a number out of the air and say, ah, we're going to take five or we're going to take seven and a half, we're going to take two. You figure out the projects, what investments you want to make, and then you reverse engineer. You go to Mike, he tells you what it's going to cost. But it's not, you don't take as much money as you can and just order it then wait. You figure, you identify what you want to invest in and then you take, you figure out how to get the money. That's what we're talking about, that. All the different options.
I'm kind of talking about what you're talking about, but I don't want to pay for $10 million if I'm not going to use it.
They can't. They have to, they have to have eight, if you get $10 million, you have to have 8.5 million worth of projects that you're going to complete in three years.
I think, I think part of your question is, what sort of thing is required by the rating agency, by the issuer to issue that type of debt? You would have to be able to show, okay, on this day we're doing this, on this we're doing this. You know, you have to have a really robust construction schedule, spending schedule, draw schedule. Thank you. So, no matter what, at the end of the day, they're not going to issue you the money if you can't show on paper, this is what we plan to spend it and this is fine.
I plan to spend it, but I don't want to pay for $10 million.
Right. Well, you wouldn't, if you couldn't, if you couldn't show that you were spending $10 million on appropriate projects.
Bond issue is not a line of credit. It's completely different.
$10 million idea. I need a credit board.
Or did you have?
Yes.
I mean, for Neiman and to Houding. I'm not sure I'm asking the right question, but we have a road fund in the budget and we have what? Is it the, the improvement of the sewer system?
Sewer fund.
That's in there as well. That would go away, correct? When I say go away.
No.
No.
Well, when I say go away, it would be part of the bond.
No.
Pay for this debt service.
What I threw out there was, there's different fees that we already collect and we could use part of those fees to fund a debt issuance to pay for those projects.
Okay.
That's what was suggested. Because you have to pay for the debt one way or another. And that's either a current user fee base, all right? Right now, we have, we've been trying to build a rainy day fund or a reserve fund out of your user fees. So, instead of lowering your fees on the sewer, we've been holding your money in an account to pay for those projects, all right, for the sewer.
Which generally a rainy day fund is recommended to have.
Right. Okay. But, so that's been ongoing, all right? And then we have the road tax, all right? Which is a tax part of your real estate bill, right? All right. So, we have, what's 4.72 million? What's the, our total is 4.72?
Oh, no, our total millage is 7.92, I believe. 5.67 is our general fund and 1.92. Five point six seven is our general fund and one point nine two is the road fund. Does that add up? Seven point five nine is the total fund.
So, one point nine two of the road tax, right? Goes towards improvements such as, we got a green light go grant. Part of those funds are going towards paying for our portion of the grant, alright? Part of those fees go towards resurfacing. Part of those fees go towards whatever reconstruction we can afford. But typically, your road tax has gone towards resurfacing, ADA, pancake rent, ADA ramp construction where we haven't had grants and we pay for the engineer, they get a percentage out of the road program and again, any kind of other improvements that we can make with the road tax.
Yeah, just to be clear, the way that the road fund works is boroughs have the option to levy a portion of their millage up to five mills per year, which can be adjusted year to year. You're not required to have one, but essentially what you're doing is you are creating what they call a reserved revenue. So, that means that there are certain limitations on how you spend it. So, if you choose to levy a road tax as part of your overall real estate tax, that just binds you to using that money on activities that relate to the permanent improvement of the road and cartways. So, that's all the road fund really is. And similarly, we have a sewer fund, an enterprise fund, that's essentially if you're taking in fees off of the sewer bills, you must then put that money back into the sewer fund. So, that's the difference between a reserved revenue and something that would be called an unreserved revenue, which is just the general fund. It means that, okay, you took the taxes in and you can kind of put it to whatever within that. So, that's really the difference that we're talking about here. So, if you would do a debt service that would use a portion of the road or sewer fund, that portion of the debt service would need to support road or sewer projects.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one comment? It's very unusual for us to get hired and do financing within a month or two months. We may spend a year or two years working with an issuer, providing resources and information as you go through the process. We don't get paid. It's like the Edgar Snyder commercial. If you don't do a deal, we don't get paid. And if I had what I've left on the table for deals that didn't get done, I would be here tonight. So, you should not feel reluctant, be reluctant to use our resources while you go through this process and give you the advice that you need to help you make intelligent decisions. It's what we do. So, don't be shy. We're happy to do it.
It looks like we have a lot of our own work to do first.
Well, this was just a big overview tonight.
Thanks, Rowa. Have you'd like to head out?
Yeah, I think I'll...
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you too.
You want to go?
I'm just asking you to be here.
You can go if you want.
Alright, see you everybody.
Bye.
Kirsten, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you're a planner by profession. Do you have any insight into this process or have you seen any of your clients do anything like this?
Well, it's nice to meet all of you because this is on planning commission and this is the first meeting that I attended as a member of the planning commission. This is why I asked if you were prepared.
Welcome to Crafton. This is what we do.
I thought this was really interesting tonight. It is a very complicated process to get projects to actually happen and there are a lot of different leading parts to get them engineered and to figure out what's needed and to figure out what bill costs and fit all the pieces together. So, I thought it was nice to have a starting point with the financing even though there's still a lot that still needs to be done.
You've kind of...
Definitely will need projects to be taken further.
Yeah, I almost think that this has like an iterative process where we have, we get an idea of what the financials are, then we move toward, we have projects, then turn all this amount, actually engineering those projects or getting cost estimates from the engineer for those projects and then going back and seeing again what they cost. It's like this kind of eddy currents until we like come to this one thing that we want to do.
And like you're, when you're a professional planner that works for us, you're seeing things from the private side essentially. So, I mean, for the most part, I know you've been on some different boards and...
I work for a company as a planner and we do mostly federal work.
Yeah.
Mostly government work and it does take, there is a lot of back and forth. Everything takes, there's a lot of back and forth. What can we spend? What do we want to do? What will it cost? What do we want to do? How do we make it happen? That changes the cost. What do we want to change about what we want to do? It takes a very long time. This is the process that is, that pretty much everything goes through.
I think it was a good exercise and it's almost just like one step and you kind of go from there. I don't know, I haven't been attending council meetings, but I think I would suggest the engineer be part of them as often as possible.
Well, yeah, they come to the second meeting every...
Okay.
Yeah, that's just a standard.
We have heard about a lot of different possibilities.
Okay.
And I think, you know, one of the biggest concerns is being careful about what projects we do, that we don't, that we don't leave money on the tangle from other sources because we're too eager, that we don't give short-trip. You mentioned the comprehensive plan, I was wondering how often that. And, you know, I understand what's in it and I'm very passionate about what's in it. And, you know, the commercial development, what's possible. I just feel like there has to be some kind of balance and I don't want to see us going into, you know, taking on debt that's too heavily focused on one area over the other. And that's my general feeling.
Actually, would you like to agree with me?
I think what we heard here tonight is a story, stepping stone and guessing the right direction. But I think what we need to worry about is when we do prioritize conflict projects or our own projects, we don't look to be too much. Keep it confined to what we see as truly important, prioritize those. Figure out what we need to borrow, what cost does that could be and just cope with that and... Don't be, don't over schedule.
Right, and we need to be transparent with the community. And to Brad's point that we've been elected to do this job, that doesn't mean that we have been elected to do it in a vacuum.
I didn't, I'm thinking, I'm going to change my tone here. I don't want to take ownership of this process and I don't think anybody here should try to own any part of it. Ultimately, my goal here is to try to leave Crafton in some way of a better position than the position I found today. So, whether I live here for thirty years as some folks or only three, I want to make sure that it's, things are going in the right direction so I can look back and say, well, you know, I played some small part of that. My point that I said that they elected us to make those decisions was facetious, yes, but my point stands, I think that ultimately, whether it's this council or another council, that body is going to have to look inward amongst itself and decide what they'd like to do and how to actually start the process, how to begin.
Well, we have the process started.
Right.
We do have...
With all due respect, I had to, well, there's been a lot of demonization over nothing. So, this is just getting a professional in here to give us professional advice and no more, no less. We went to the fire department and spoke to a professional firefighter who gave us professional advice. Whether we act on that advice is, there's seven of us and there's bigger things than just what we feel at that moment or what we want to do in that moment, who we don't like on council and who has an agenda and who has a problem. Because we have to look forward to see where we're going to leave the community when we're not here or we're out of this community, off of council or moved out. So, you know, I look at this process as if I would have called my crown and said, hey, I want to ask questions about the fire trucks. Can I come down and just shoot the bees with you guys? Or, you know, that was the, that was what this was supposed to be, which is why I went ahead on a vision quest, as RJ called it, to do with it. I don't know any financial planners. I don't have a background in that. Had I had a background, had I Christine's background, I might have known someone I could have called and said, hey, can you give me some data? I'd like to give it to some members of council, we can have them come in. I didn't know how to do that. I didn't know where to start. I actually considered Googling and then I called Stephen Phil and I said, just do this, help me do this before I make a mess of it, to which they did. So, I just, you know, whether we take out a bond and invest in the town is irrelevant to me at this point.
It's information gathering.
It's information gathering, right, totally, thank you.
So, I just, real quick, I wanted to kind of throw a sentiment out there that might be a little feel-good, you know, touchy feely, but just a thought. Rich, sorry to hold you out there.
That's okay.
Rich, you know, when you were speaking earlier, you mentioned, you know, whether we're doing a council project or one of our, you know, planning commission projects or that or not. I think it's important to remember that it's all a project that's part of the borough, right? You know, it's not like if we do one project, oh, well, this is the planning commissions or, oh, this is the red boards or this is that. And I know that that comment was not said in a native or, you know, or a way that was not properly phrased. But I just, you know, it's, there is no they, them, his, her, whatever. We're all working together as one entity and people are appointed to make certain decision-making powers under a board, commission, agency, whatever. But at the end of the day, whatever project we do, we'll, you know, the borough will have ownership of it. And so, just, you know, a thought to put in the discussion of that.
Excuse me, my name's Dave Bloom, like one resident at this time. I've been to a few council meetings. I know this is a conversation we could have tomorrow, but the elephant in the room is the Clearview Street project. The money that allows us to be in talks about us for this project and the cost of the amount of it. I think when you think of it as a whole, as we move forward for this meeting tomorrow and everybody's talking what's going to be best for the town, whether it's the sewers or whether we're in compliance, are we being fined for not being in compliance? Is this something that's happening to us? Is there a new decree coming down the road that we need to fall in line with? So, when you're looking at it tomorrow before the meeting, before everybody's talking, let's just look at the elephant in the room and that's the big project up there. And that's instead of being...
Incredible, Lord.
Yeah, instead of talking about, that's the big thing. That's what everybody's up in arms of. That's what I got four phone calls with, to get a write-in, to get a write-in, to get on council because there's a lot of people that feel that council's moving in a direction that's not for the best of the whole community. Doesn't mean that nobody's running a good job, but they're trying to do the best they can. But it's their saying, some people start moving in the wrong direction and it's hard to stop that train when you're going. So, you have to stop and step back and look. If all this stuff can be done, like this fella here, you know, this is stuff, it's a two-year process. It's this or that you start out. You started out with the money the other night to be able to start doing some, you know, just some surveying and whatnot, which is good information to have. But to then to come in and say, alright, here's what we're going to do. We're going to put tanks and buses, we're going to do this, we're going to do that.
Yeah, may I interrupt you, just so you know, the funding for that project is not tied to any debt issuance.
On that bond that they're talking about? None of that?
No, it's, that's an eighty-five percent paid project.
Eighty-five percent, what's the total number on the project?
So, that, so they want to break that project down into two phases over two years and it's a three and a half...
They're changing of Crafton Boulevard.
Crafton Boulevard.
So, Grand View is done and pays.
Well, oh, yeah.
Wait, we just stay on that. So, the, it's a, turning out to be a three point five million dollar project, split over two years and there's a two million dollar cap per phase, right? That Alcasan will pay. So, the borough's share of that is fifteen percent. So, working with the manager...
Potentially, yeah.
Right.
I mean, we don't, okay, so, do you want me to just add a little bit of context overall?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's roughly fifteen percent. I think the context helps.
Right, you know, we're talking, we're either shuttered on, you're allowed to...
Please go ahead.
So, yeah, I mean, that's the match that we're expecting to get from Alcasan if we get grow grant approval, which I mean, as far as what we're hearing from the engineers, it's likely that we will. The deadline to officially submit this grant is the end of June.
If you don't submit the grant, it goes to next year?
Well, I mean, you can, the grant, this comes back every single year. This grant is on a yearly cycle. So, typically, when you submit for a project...
After this year, we'll have five more, five years, just five more years of funding left.
Well, I mean, for now, you know, but probably the next phase of the consent order may affect what the state and the county tries to do to Alcasan. But I do want to point out, if we were to do, let's say, this project in two phases, which is something that the engineers are discussing with Alcasan. Usually, the construction of any of those projects kind of straddles two budget cycles. So, the first half of them might be incurred, let's just say, in 2020 to use an easy year. Not that anything is set in stone. And then the other half will be in 2021 and then you apply for the second phase and then probably it would hit 2022, 2023. So, it's not necessarily that you have to have a whole lot of cash, you know, for any project that's a grow grant.
With this project we're talking about, do we have to have it to be in compliance?
Yes, so we have to have a ten percent...
Well, if you got to have this specific project, is that your question?
Correct.
This is a project.
So, point, compliance point number twenty-two needs to be, have an overall ten percent reduction of flow. So, that's all that water coming from up there and the engineer's going to go more into that. And then just to sort of explain further, that Clearview project was half paid for by the DEP and then we funded it through our sewer fees. If we're able to separate that Clearview project into the Crafton Boulevard project, we will get up to eighty-five percent of those funds expended.
That's not guaranteed.
If we separate it, it will be guaranteed because it's a separation. The Alcasan is looking for low-hanging fruit. The Borough Crafton is the low-hanging fruit because we're a combined community. So, they're going to focus their efforts on dollars and communities like ours.
If we don't do this project?
So, if we don't do that project, we have to come up with another project.
I might recommend having this discussion if you're all going to attend tomorrow when the engineer is present because I can give it my best shot answering any discussion.
Well, there's two questions that really, and I'll bring this for everybody. Are we in compliance? And if we're not in compliance, why aren't we being fined? And if we're not in compliance, what's the engineer, we've been paying the engineers to do all these years that we're doing it? And what's coming down the pipe for us, is that the rules we have to be following? Not what we're thinking it's going to be, what not what it might be. So, if we're out of compliance, why aren't we getting fined? And if we are out of compliance, what's the engineering firm doing for us?
What was that number, consent order number twenty-two?
So, point, compliance point twenty-two, it's a...
Point twenty-two.
Right, C twenty-two.
Where do I find that?
I do think that this would be good to talk to.
Right, and that's what the engineer's coming to prepare.
Talk tomorrow, call them now.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay. Meeting adjourned?
Meeting adjourned. Forty-eight on time.